Let's call the order, our Beachwood Board of Education meeting for September the 8th. And welcome everybody. We have a crowd, it's nice to see all the faces. Mrs. Berger.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mrs. Slate.
Here.
Mrs. Wood.
Here.
Okay, recognition of guests, which is lovely to see. Mr. Kaiser, would you like to?
Sure, I'm gonna list off, yeah, I'm gonna list off all the GSP, which is the Governor Scholar Program, the Governor's School for the Arts, GSA, and GSE, which is the Governor's School for Entrepreneurs. I'll call your name.
You think we're gonna go against that wall over there?
Yeah, so when you get up, call your name, you all stand up over here, hold applause till the end, and then we'll get everybody in one large group, we'll get the board members up there, and we'll take a photo of you. Before I begin, and just name everybody off, I know with GSP, GSA, and GSE, it's, you guys leave your homes for sometimes three weeks, four weeks, and sometimes more, and if you're your parents, 'cause I had one this year for the first time. And it was like a month long, you guys spend a month on campus, wherever you're at, I know there's different spots where you guys go, and you are fully immersed in an experience that probably prepares you better for what you're gonna do after high school than anything. So, to take on that responsibility, to go down there and do that, and spend that time and dedication to whatever you're passionate about, whether it be entrepreneurship, the arts, or pure academics, makes Beachwood very proud, probably makes your parents, who, some of them are probably here, makes them very proud, and you should be proud of yourselves. It's a pretty big deal to take on that responsibility in the middle of summer, to go basically continue school, not just for seven or eight hours a day, but all day, all night, every day for a month. And so that's a really great accomplishment, and it's a way to represent the school, Beachwood, the community, like not many other kids get to do. So, I'd like to thank each and every one of you who are here, and those that are not here, thank them as well. So, when I read your name off, just stand over here, and then we'll get a picture, okay? For Governor Scholar Program, Adelaide Shilling, Maya Gelhoff, Ruby Freeze, even if you're not here, I'm still gonna name their names, so we have it on record, Isabel Bakker, those are our GSP kiddos. Now for GSA, Governor's School for the Arts, we have Malia Driscoll, Maddie Hoops, George Kaiser, Jack Isor, they're probably out at the end right now, Bella Sloane, and GSE, Jacob Sipple. All right, let's give them a round of applause.
You all are welcome to stay for the meeting, or you can take, I know it's frivolity. But you can take this opportunity, that's all good. Thank you for coming.
Dedication.
Okay, on to our discussion and action agenda, on to the working budget. We've taken motion to approve the working budget for 25-26, is that the notification? I'll make a motion. Do you have anything to add about working budget?
Yeah, I talked with Kristy about the working budget, from the tentative budget to the working, you wanna kind of explain how we got to where we are?
Yeah, I mean, there's not many changes, it's very similar what tentative was. The big thing, the items that changed were their tax revenue, it kind of reduced by 130 grand because of the new property that came online, and increased their PVA, and so more was diverted to the restricted fund, and less to the general fund. The other thing is our carry forward reduced a little bit due to some additional retirement, second annual leave payouts at the end of the year. But we were able to absorb all those reductions in revenue with the offset in the decrease in salary and benefits related to the reorganization and structuring, and then like some of the replacement of hires and stuff like that we've done in the past, past two months or so. So, I mean, it was very, it's a very healthy budget, you know, I maintained our contingency, and there's flexibility in it, so it's, it's a relief. We should be fine.
Anybody have any questions? Mrs. Berger. Anybody have any questions? Mrs. Berger.
Yes.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Mr. Hood.
Yes.
Mrs. Slate.
Yes.
Mrs. Wood.
Yes.
On to item B, take a motion to approve the tree removal quote.
Well, I don't think there's a motion yet, because we, kind of, we have to discuss the three quotes, of which one we'd like to choose.
Okay, but you have to do the motion first in order to this.
Motion to, motion to approve a quote.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
So that has to be read. It says, for two per tree. Doesn't say which one.
So for this one, we have the three quotes, and I just wanted you guys to be able to discuss the three quotes that were offered in regard to just removing the trees. So the three quotes, one came from Schuler, one came from Arbor Care, and one came from Go- getter. And they're all, they're not too far off the price, but all three offered their quotes to go in, remove the tree, stump grind, and clean up.
Do we have a projected cost for replanting?
One, one offered a replanting as part of their quote, I took that out, it was in, I believe Arbor Care, and it was like four or five thousand dollars to replant, eight foot trees, eight to 10 foot trees going back in.
Okay.
With, and, so once this is, happens, then it's, okay, I've been talking with you guys about getting three different types of trees, three different, three different options, making sure when they're planted that they're at least eight to 10 feet tall.
Okay. So they wouldn't, how long would they wait, did they, I'm saying how long they would wait after the stump removed, before they would actually plant?
They could do it in the, in the fall, before it gets cold out, they could do it in the spring.
I don't know anything about, when is the best time of year?
Yeah, not winter.
Fall, like early fall? And we're still thinking fall break?
If we get it removed, fall break.
Right.
And then if we had a, it depends on probably the temperature and the climate from after October 10th, after they're removed, to November, if we can get them in there and plant them, if we can get it done then. If not, we could wait until April, March, April.
Anybody have any thoughts on that process, and do we want to get them planted earlier versus later? I would love to get them planted earlier. Yeah.
Yeah.
Once this, once this, this ball is rolling, then we can start on, okay, let's look at three options from each one of these. Each one of these also provides the planting option, we get three different types of trees, one already offered, a green giant at eight to 10 feet tall to plant, those don't shed, they're green, year-round. The two other trees, I don't, I can't pronounce what they were, but.
Are any of them shade trees versus pine tree types?
Yeah, two others were.
So it's a diverse options?
Yeah.
Four of all the same thing, or?
No, it'd be three different options for each company, but they would suggest there are three that would fit, like architect, landscape architecture, aesthetically for the front wall and like that, deciduous.
Were you saying, plant four of the same tree, whatever we chose?
Yeah.
That's what you meant, right?
Like, aren't we doing four, or we doing some kind of different, something different? What, I mean, what are they proposing?
Everyone, they, they've just suggested four of the same, kind of, we have, not now, but we wouldn't, I don't think they would do two, like evergreens and two deciduous, but I think four of the same would be, that's up to you guys, I guess, I can think of.
So I'm looking at the, the prices of three different quotes, so one is for 14,000, one is for 16, and then 17. Isn't that all in place the same?
The 17, six.
Oh, that includes.
The plant, so that, that goes down to 14.
Okay.
Roughly.
Which one, I'm counting, that's Go- getter? That's the Go- getter, so, oh, I thought I saw 12. 14, 16, or 12? There is 12, but then there's a 2,000 something. Oh, okay. Okay. So we've got us a 14. Do you have a strong feeling, like, when you were meeting with these different companies?
They're all, they're all fine, the, the only difference between the three of them is one of them is local, one of them, the person who does it lives, done work here before, but I don't want any conflict of interest of like, you know, so, it's not like there is that, that he's done work here for us before, and done trimming of trees, he's done a lot of the landscape work, he's local, went to school here, it's a Schuler, but the other two are good, good as well, I have no, I have no preference.
Was that the 16?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I've used Go- getter personally, and had a good experience, but I've heard nothing but good things about the other two, also, a lot of word of mouth regarding the other two.
I don't know anything, Arbor Care, I've used Go- getter, fabulous, I know I've used Schuler also, but I don't know Arbor Care, I have not, never read it, so I don't. Yeah, I'm different Cincinnati, can we ask Schuler to sharpen their pencils?
Sure.
You wanna use somebody local, but their price was more expensive, I don't know.
We took out a big oak tree at my house, they did a great job.
Who's that?
Schuler.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't like the labor of the whole thing, but at the same time, I'd like to use somebody local, but I also don't like the idea of spending more money than we need to, even if it's a couple thousand dollars, so.
I can always see if they can come back and lower price, and if they do, the question is, how do we approve that, outside of maybe to get that ball rolling?
Am I, am I missing Schuler's quote? I've got Arbor Care, Go- getter, and.
There's one more.
Oh, hit it.
It's the last one. I mean, at the price. You have to actually have them.
It just, I know.
You don't.
It doesn't say Schuler.
Yes, okay.
If you, maybe it's a program.
So if we wanna use the logo guy, then you are gonna go back, do we vote and say yes, but then you go back and beam up, or?
Yeah.
That's not exactly.
Do we have to come back and do it again?
And we have to redo this motion. Is, I guess, the question. We don't have to make another motion to do that, right? To do what? What do you wanna do? Redo the motion we had, sorry, I'm in the wrong one, tree removal, five. I guess you can amend it and base it on amount of money, you know, I mean, you can make your motion to say whatever you want. Right, but.
We already made it.
There's not a recommendation, is what I'm saying, so typically there's a recommendation on which one, and there's not, so that's why I'm asking you, we need to redo that whole motion, amend it to. What, I'm not sure, are you gonna, I'm not sure where you're trying to get at.
We made a motion already.
Right, so we don't until we get Schuler to give us a better. Then we withdraw this motion.
What, what, what was the motion, exactly?
I made a motion to approve a quote.
So if we approve it, we won't amend it, we just say we're gonna do this guy, right?
Yeah, we're gonna name somebody, we really need to name somebody. Then you all name somebody, and we will add that to the.
Can we qualify that name, motion to approve the Schuler quote?
We can amend the motion, we can amend the motion to, yes, we can amend the motion to.
And they have the choice of, of delining it or not.
And then if they, if they're not able. So you wanna amend the motion to approve a tree removal, removal quote from.
I don't say it, say Schuler, but.
So we can have something to fall back on?
If they don't meet that recommended price, then we will go with the next best, which is, name that Go- getter.
You got that?
You got that all right?
Nope. Okay, we're gonna say motion to approve a tree removal quote from.
Schuler.
Schuler, based on.
A price of.
A price decrease?
Price decrease, an acceptable price decrease.
Comparable to.
The other two quotes.
I second.
I can't type that fast. Comparable to other quotes.
If request is not met, then we will go with the next best quote being Go- getter. There we go.
Got it.
Yes.
We did it.
We just have to get close, right?
The, 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 the removal will be awarded to, to whom?
Schuler.
Go- getter, Go- getter.
And if not?
Schuler, if not.
Motion to approve a tree removal quote from Schuler, based on an acceptable price decrease comparable to other quotes. If request is not met, then removal award will go to.
Go- getter.
Will go to.
Or Go- getter Tree Service.
There we go.
And whoever they are can come to my house before the wedding real quick and take a couple of pictures.
All right, so, you want me to read the motion again, and then we vote on it, or we have a more discussion?
Read it.
Motion to approve a tree removal quote from Schuler, based on acceptable price decrease comparable to the other quotes. If request is not met, the removal award will go to Go- getter Tree Service. So, are you all ready to vote? Mrs. Berger.
Yes.
Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Mr. Hood.
Yes.
Mrs. Slate, yes.
Mrs. Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that motion carries.
Got it. All right, great work.
Yes. On to the consent agenda, take a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. You have anything that you wanna discuss on the consent agenda, or are you?
There's a couple of things, one being, you'll see, as item E, I notified Mr. Jeremy Dieters of termination of contract this past week. He will provide services through September 30th, our timeline, based on this RFP as part of the consent agenda. We will open the RFP tomorrow, it will run till September 19th, on September 19th it will close. We will then go through some interviews in a special meeting, a closed session to interview potential candidates for the replacement of board attorney from the different firms, that will be on September 23rd, where we'll interview with the hopes of creating a contract to be, to go into effect on October 1st. So we'll have coverage from Jeremy until the 30th, with the transfer of coverage to the next, the winning firm on October 1st. So we will gather proposals between now and the 19th to review, and then set some interviews for the 23rd, and go from there. While being part of this open meeting, I do wanna say I appreciate all that Jeremy's done. I, I've only worked with him very closely for two months, but in my other positions in the district, from, from operations to high school principal, he was always good to work with and, and available, and had a great working relationship from, from my perspective. So, appreciate all he's done for the, for the district, and, and myself, so, I just wanted to say that publicly.
Absolutely, I agree, and has been there for us over the last, I guess, five years, so, yeah, appreciate his work. Anything else on the, on the consent agenda, or?
Just a, I mean, some of the things you might not understand, KECSEC, KECSEC is our governing body that oversees Guardian Angel. Brad Bentley, who's our Guardian Angel administrator, puts together kind of the rationale and the justification of funding for, that we get through KECSEC. And so he puts a lot of work in to show all the great things that are going on at Guardian Angel in order to secure that funding. And so that agreement is there, just to outline that, that Guardian Angel is doing everything they have to do in order to secure that. So, Brad, I just wanna also say, Brad, thank you to him for, for doing that every year, and putting in the work and the time to show all the great things going on at Guardian Angel. EKU Option 9 is the same thing we did with NKU, there's a, there is a staff member here that is seeking their certification through EKU Option 9. So, that's just an agreement that we have with them. LANGO, Language Services, it's just affordable language services that we've had in the past, it's just changing its name. It's, it's a really great program, it's any of our staff members, if they need to contact a family with, with, it's an EL family of, of any language, they can use this service to call, have a translator at the drop of a hat, within, within minutes. And so, it's a really great service, they also come in and can provide service to interpret for a meeting like this, or service to interpret maybe in sign language. So, they offer all languages to, to help us out in communication with the families that we have in the district. So, that is LANGO. Civics test, by, by law, we have to give a civics, civics test to every student before they graduate, once they hit ninth grade, at some point between ninth grade and 12th grade, 70% on the test is passing, that test is aligned. seventy percent on the test is passing, that test is aligned to the national, like, citizenship test. We have to submit that and make sure it's aligned, um, so that's, that's on there.
Is that new?
No, it's, it's been going on for a few years now. Now, board approval was new, I believe, but the actual test.
Seen the actual test.
Yeah, and so.
It's there, that's what's there.
And we'll take it to the next board meeting, see how we're doing.
How early, I will take the test.
Uh, e- even like a student that shows up as a junior, may not have been at a school, or a senior may not have been in a school that does require it. So we have to make sure that all those students, when they do enroll, that they do complete it. So most of it's like all of our freshmen, but there's kids that transfer in from, uh, just a lot of work to make sure all those kiddos are taken care of. Cybersecurity report, we're, we're required to send a report to the state KDE to show that we're in compliance. Obviously, Tim is the, the mastermind behind our cybersecurity and all the things that go on that we have no idea how to understand. So we're going to do a really good attempt at saying some of these words. What, uh, the cybersecurity report, uh, is to demonstrate that we are in compliance with the things we need to do to make sure that our building and our campus and our students are safe. So we have to show that we meet federal regulations on COPA, COPA, the Child Internet Protection Act. It's the software that we have that allows us to do that, we have Immunis, we have Infinite Campus, we are at Google School and Microsoft. So all those have the safety measures built in to allow us to, to, uh, be compliant with those federal regulations. And then we also have some additional current security measures that we show the state that we're doing, like the antivirus software, patch scanning, don't know what that is, firewall, I, I get it, but I don't know how that works. MFA, Tim says MFA quite a bit, and no one knows what MFA is, it's multi-factor authentication. So there you go, lesson for the day. And then geolocational controls, you know, obviously, geolocational controls are part of it. So that is all the stuff that, that Tim and Brandon put together to make sure that our kiddos, our staff, our campus is safe, and has built-in measures to prevent a cyber attack as well. So that is the cybersecurity report, and then you see the surplus play clocks, play clocks that we have, um, from the field.
When those get sold, do they go back to the athletic budget?
Mm-hmm. That would go in there.
Um, I do have one question, when, um, on use of facilities? So are all of our, like, teams at Beechwood, they get all their time first before we start letting?
Absolutely.
Other entities?
Couple, couple measures, we make sure that every Beechwood program has precedence.
Right.
And that goes, the hierarchy of that is varsity gets first dibs, then it gets the JV, then the freshman, then the middle school, the elementary. So that all happens, and once that's all filled and complete, then the only, in general, the only teams that do get on here are like a basketball, or soccer, or some outside entity, but primarily, almost all made up of Beechwood kids, so.
I just know we usually are very short on, on time, you know, and that's why I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and they don't get precedence over any other sport. It's your consent agenda.
Yeah, anybody have any other questions? Ready? Mrs. Berger, I think we are, yes, thank you.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mrs. Slate?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood? Yes.
Okay, mission carries, um, on to information portion, superintendent's report.
All right, um, first off, I'm excited to, as part of this superintendent's report, kind of do some, some learning, throughout the course of the year. So we'll do some programs that we have here, tonight will be Gifted and Talented, but we'll also go through the cycle of all the, uh, kind of supplemental programs that we have here, so everyone can learn on what these great people do. Then we get into the twenty-sixth school year, we'll start to look at each pillar, uh, of the, um, of the, the three-year strategic plan, and we'll start to communicate and do some learning around each one of the pillars and what we're doing in each one of those. So to carve out a little bit of time, uh, to be able to do some learning is really exciting, and I'm glad that we get to showcase our great staff members to, to show what they do. You have teachers, you have administrators, you have all these other people, then you have these kind of like glue people that make sure all these programs are on, Ashley being one of those people, the Gifted and Talented program, and I'm going to turn it over to her to explain kind of what she has done, not just to continue on what we've had here, but, but make it a lot better, um, whether it be building the program and adding to it, or communicating to our families what this program's all about. So, um, she's really taken it and, and lifted it to heights that it hasn't been before, so I'll turn it over to Ashley now.
Thank you. Okay, um, so, um, I'm Ashley Ritchie, um, Gifted and Talented Coordinator. Super excited this year to also introduce Jessica Insweiler. She, um, was hired this year to be, um, part-time gifted support teacher. It's the first time that we've ever had two people, um, in the Gifted and Talented program, and I cannot tell you how wonderful it is to have an extra person supporting, um, and working with students. So I just wanted you to be able, um, to put a face with her name. So just a couple of highlights, um, this is my third year as Gifted and Talented Coordinator. Beechwood's gifted program currently serves over three hundred students, K-12. Ninety of those students are primary talent pool, which is made up of grades K through three. The rest of those are formerly ID students in grades four through twelve. Many of those students are gifted in more than one area, so they're three or four or five areas, so they have multiple plans. So having an extra person to support the number of students we have at Beechwood in the program is extremely important. So just a couple of highlights, um, when I took over the program three years ago, the goal kind of was to pick one area and just build on that. So the first year, we really focused on primary talent pool. So primary talent pool is the elementary side of the program, um, so what students receive in kindergarten through third grade. The one thing that we really focused on was making sure that students who are, um, PTP, so identified as that, which means we, they've gone through the committee and, um, we've decided to place them that way. They receive that small group instruction, uh, based on, you know, enrichment that they need. So those kids get instruction now with Jessica, um, once a week for thirty minutes, which is huge, it's more than they've ever gotten. We also implemented a PETS, which is like a critical thinking, um, creativity program in grades K through three. So every student at Beechwood participates in that creativity program, uh, which is a great way to, um, identify high potential learners in the area of creativity. The second thing that we focused on, um, is our website. So we worked to, um, this summer, we revamped, um, the Beechwood website. It was just really outdated, and it wasn't very user-friendly for families or students. So what we worked on was to make sure that it was ready for everyone, so students, families, um, staff. So, um, you can see that we have, um, lots of student buttons so that they can access all of their, um, resources in one place. We even have a primary talent pool button, which are full of resources for those, um, students in the elementary building. Most importantly, I feel like it's really important for our families to know what we do in the gifted program. I think that, um, we haven't always been super clear in what we provide. So the first thing that, the biggest part is we developed a talent, um, development model, so it shows what we provide students in grades K through twelve on one spot. So it shows what we use to identify them, what programs we use to support them, and then where they can receive, um, outside services, um, to support them outside of Beechwood. Um, so I think it's just a nice snapshot of what we provide, um, from elementary all the way to the time that they graduate. Families can also read about how we do the gifted program, they can, um, go to the arts, um, read different enrichment opportunities. So there's just a lot of resources on our, um, on our new website. Um, the other thing that we changed in the first year is the way that we progress monitor. By state, um, regulation, you have to progress monitor gifted students twice a year. So we changed that process, we wanted it to be meaningful for students and parents and teachers. So, um, students now get, um, progress monitor on a report card, but then they receive a detailed, um, piece from every single teacher in their gifted area that details how they're performing in class and what they're doing. It's been a really positive way for gifted students to hear how they're doing in class, instead of just saying you're getting an A, which most of them are, um, so we're really proud of that. We also developed, um, dance identification at Beechwood. It was the only area, um, of gifted and talented that we did not service here. So we developed a process, we currently have eight students who are identified gifted in dance, so we provide their enrichment by doing workshops at school, um, and progress monitoring them that way. The thing I'm probably the most proud of, um, is our middle grades, this is my second, um, my second year project. Our students in grades six through eight, you know, Beechwood's unique because they're like the middle school, but they're not. They're in high school and also finally are in elementary. So we created an enrichment menu, so these students who are in sixth or eighth grade, um, attend a launch event. We teach them all about their enrichment opportunities, um, and then they, um, choose their own enrichment outside of the classroom. So they have a menu for the first semester and a menu for the second semester. They get to choose what they want to go on, um, all of the, um, you can see on this side, all the details have priority IDs. So priority ID is the area that a student is gifted in. I've been really, um, big on teaching students, I want them to be able to say what their name is and what their priority IDs are, because a lot of students don't know. So that's something we've been working on. So this menu was different than what was offered last year, um, and it will be different again in the spring. So they're just getting lots of different, um, opportunities to leave campus and also bring, um, partners in to work with our students. So moving forward, um, some goals that we have for this year with Jessica, the biggest goal that we have is just to develop a primary talent pool curriculum. We want to be able to show parents what we teach. So we're working on second grade this year, so the goal is that by the end of the school year, second grade is complete. So like a three-year cycle to get all of those primary grades finished. We're also really hoping to increase enrichment in grades nine through twelve. A lot of those kids take AP classes and honors classes, um, but there's not just a lot of extra opportunities for them. So by having another person to focus on more of the elementary side teaching, it allows more time for me to work on those opportunities and be more involved in the high school. Clear, consistent communication with families. We've worked really hard to build that on Class Dojo on the elementary side, so to communicate what we're doing with our PTP students. And they use a Google Classroom for gifted students, and then also being involved with, you know, the high school newsletter and those pieces. And then finally, developing, um, staff resources, so just increasing that capacity of what our staff members can do and use in the classroom to support, um, gifted learners.
That's a little GT, that's on.
Awesome.
That's great.
Any questions for Ashley?
Good, I'd like to see the high schools getting, so I used to be more primarily.
Right.
Yeah, so. Thank you.
Sure.
I can tell you the communication thing, right, this year, already. I feel like I get two, three messages a week between my two kids, and that's so much increase, so you guys are definitely hitting the home run on that.
That's especially good if your kids are in the gifted and talented.
Before you wrote your, had your goals up there, I wrote like increased opportunities, like an effort in increasing opportunities. There's evidence of that, there's evidence of increased communication. There's evidence of you leading teachers to be able to feel more comfortable providing those enrichments. So much so, I mean, you said three hundred kids, I mean, it's almost twenty percent of our kids. Twenty percent of our entire population is gifted, we should probably be devoting a lot of time to that, so. So much so that she's been so successful in that, and, and such a leader, that we've invited her to be part of the cabinet. So she was integral in, in development of the three-year strategic plan, just somebody who's talented herself, uh, just very happy that she's part of the team, so, great work.
Thanks.
Yeah, Christine, come up.
I'm back.
There you are.
She's back.
The owl, the owl find you.
So really, you know, again, we're still early in the year, pretty much August is like a half of a normal month when we're full bore in school year, so, you know, really not seeing a lot of action or changes. It seems like we're going along according to budget and plan, nothing popping out, you know, to highlight, really, as far as I'm concerned. I know I review this with, um, Justin and Sarah too, every month. Really, because, you know, we just approved the tax rate, we more or less see that money coming in, starting like November is when you start seeing that. And, you know, we've only had a half a month of like full payroll costs, which is really the largest cost we have in the district. So that'll, September, we'll see more of that, you'll see like a normal month. So I, I mean, I, there really isn't a lot of, it just, it's very minimal right now, what's going on. Yeah, it's so early, exactly, it is, so. I really, I feel like, honestly, I feel like when we get to like November is when we're really, we're going to get a real feel, like more of a feel what's going on.
Especially with utility bills and stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
And all the things, and all the costs, yeah, I agree. Anything else you have to add?
Uh, a couple of things, um, Commissioner Fletcher, uh, for KDE. He was scheduled to visit on the twenty-ninth of September, but he's bumped that to October seventeenth. So he'd be, be here on Friday, October seventeenth, I don't know if it's morning or afternoon, just save the date, so he'll be around. He wants to tour the new school, he wants to see the curriculum, he wants to see the deeper vibrant learning that they're pushing from the state. He just keeps hearing about Beechwood, and so he wants to see what's going on. Speaking of that, and, and other superintendents willing to come visit, uh, Dr. Poe, former superintendent at Boone County, reached out from the Northern Kentucky Education Council. He wants to bring a bunch of superintendents here, they'll be visiting, uh, doing a site visit on September thirtieth to see, again, what we're doing to be ahead of the game in regards to deeper learning, vibrant learning, and just, people want to see the building, they want to see what's, what goes on at Beechwood. September thirtieth, uh, reminder, on Monday, uh, a week from today, we have our joint session. That's with SBDM and, uh, the Board of Education. We'll be doing something a little bit different this year, it will be more of an interactive experience where board members and SBDM, SBDM members will partner up and do some learning around the five pillars. So there'll be some rotation station activities, we'll, we'll treat it kind of like, like school. And so I'm excited to, to do that, uh, and learn together on the fifteenth, so it's next Monday. I've been doing the staff meets, I'm probably about seventy-five percent. I'm thinking to myself, why did I sign up to do this, uh, to meet with the hundred and so staff members? But I'm, I'm getting there, I'm chipping away, I've got till the September thirtieth to do so, but they've been awesome. Just to like, meet with everybody individually and talk to them and get their feedback, and it's just been very positive. So those have been going great. We have our next two-by-two, which, again, two-by-two is two board members. I know, uh, Kyle came last time, this is not just, I think, I don't know who's coming this Friday, but our next two-by-two is this Friday, September twelfth. Kyle, you want to share out your experience, like what we were able to do on that day?
It was, I'm, I'm glad you came up with the concept of it, because it was great seeing the building operating. You know, when I'm here after hours or on weekends and stuff, it's just an entirely different vibe, and you hear, especially having younger kids, you hear about what the high school is doing, you hear about what our middle school-age kids are doing, but to actually see it in action was really cool, and I actually loved visiting classrooms, seeing so many of the kids and just seeing the building alive, um, you know, all the, the work that prior boards and prior administrators have put in. It was a really neat experience, very motivating for me, to see the building operating that way.
Great. So this Friday will be our next two-by-two, we'll have one each month, and so, uh, that's this Friday. I do want to take a moment to recognize Savannah Starks and Brittany Average. Both of them were Teacher of the Year for KMEA for Region Six, I believe. Savannah being the middle school, uh, Teacher of the Year, and Brittany being the elementary Teacher of the Year. So very prestigious award, award, um, it's not surprising, they put in so much time, so much effort. And our music program is second to none, so it's, I'm, I'm glad that they are getting recognized for the work they do. Girl soccer, all A champs, and they are in the midst of a regional right now, it's like a sectional. They play Brawlsert sometime this week, um, and if they win that, then they go to like the official state. And so girl soccer being successful in, in the first year of a new head coach. And then volleyball, uh, has kind of advanced beyond that, they are at state. And so volleyball, um, has been strong so far this year, I think they're in top fifteen in the state, uh, all classes, and they will, uh, head down Friday, since they are going to state, we're going to do a send-off. So Friday morning, nine forty-five-ish, uh, outside, we'll do a proper send-off for them actually going down to state. Now, if girl soccer does the same thing and makes it down to state, then we'll do the same thing. But volleyball's, uh, ready to go, hopefully they, they do some damage. They're down at Owensboro, they're down at Owensboro?
They're down at Owensboro, yeah.
I, I don't know who they're playing first round, do they do like a round robin?
They do, and they have matches Friday night, one Saturday morning, and then after that.
Then it settles and sees. And so, uh, yeah, that's this, this weekend. Speaking of which, Friday is our first home football game, always, always good to get that first home football game on Friday. Unavailable in scoreboard, senior night, board golf, and cross-country. Should be a, a, a nice evening, the band's going to play their full, uh, show at halftime. Weather looks good, eighty-five and sunny, and should cool down pretty quickly, so there, there's nothing like it in the fall with the band and all the athletics, and so I'm, I'm excited. i- there's nothing like it in the fall with the band and all the athletics and so I'm I'm excited for that.
And so we have new student, are we have students doing the scoreboard?
We will, we have two interns.
Well, not scoreboard, but the um video.
Two interns will run the 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 media part of the scoreboard, our crew will be doing the score part, but um will be, there'll be some graphics and hopefully some commercials and some ads. Uh the boosters have been working very hard to secure sponsorships, so they've they've done a good job with that. Um so, yeah, hopefully it all comes together on Friday night. Um another really cool thing is our 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 AP scores are finally in, like full AP scores from a high school perspective. Uh ultimately, a seventy-eight percent pass rate, which is really high, especially when you consider this, and so I wanna clarify for our community at at large is we don't allow or not allow kids to take AP. We let any kid who wants to take AP, take it. We actually encourage every kid to taste, take at least one AP before they leave here. A lot of schools do not do that, they only allow certain students into those AP courses knowing that they can handle it class or not. So we push all of our students to try to take that, to see like, I can do an AP class, I can go to college. So that's one aspect of it. Then the other aspect is we require them to take the test. Some schools may say, yeah, you can take AP, but only certain students we can allow to take the test, it's optional. We require all of them to take the test, so no gatekeeping on the front end or back end, and we have scores, we're at a seventy-eight percent pass rate, it's pretty strong. Um one of those, we had a new teacher this year for AP Chem, hundred percent pass rate in her first year teaching AP Chem, so just really great highlights, and that goes across the board, all our teachers put a lot of time in. It's not just those AP teachers that do it, it's the teachers that lead up to AP. It's those middle grade teachers, it's those elementary teachers that build and scaffold, that create these superstars that go in and get threes and fours and fives on these AP exams. So it's a really great team effort to show kind of a culminating um outcome, so just want to take a moment to to recognize that.
Thank you.
Um Kroger. Oh boy. Kroger's going through some things right now. They kinda, uh might be a little karma, uh but anyway. They uh they've been nice, and I do wanna reiterate to our community, those who are watching, if you're watching, please spread the word. Please tell those that you know that go and pick up at Kroger or drop off at Kroger to be nice and to follow the rules and to please meet Kroger where they are, Kroger does not have to allow them. Kroger knows we are a great community partner, Kroger has been lenient. When you get to drop off in the morning is pretty civil. Um I think everybody's calm, it's in the morning, and uh there's flow, there's nobody waiting. But and then parking, student parking, they've been great, kids have been great this year, they've adjusted. Um parking's not an issue for Kroger, they they wanna provide those spots to the kids. Pickup is the one I'm asking for some help. Pickup is where we want people to follow the rules, don't go in the lot until two forty, um because we've had in the past thirty, forty cars sitting in the lot creating congestion while somebody's trying to get gas or a delivery's coming in, or someone just wants to park or an employee wants to leave. That congestion creates a little bit of an issue, so we're asking our community to not go into that lot until two forty. Once two forty hits, come through, pick up your child and go. Um this is not something that that be, uh I, the ultimate thing is that's your choice to do that. What we do suggest everyone doing is pick up and drop off at Beechwood, because Beechwood can provide a safe drop-off, safe pickup, uh that is monitored by staff. That is not our property to monitor, so that is parents upon their own accord going up there and doing that. Um so I do wanna reiterate that Beechwood can provide the best drop-off, the best pickup, the most safe uh for your kiddos. So also be aware of the 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 safety that comes with that, uh that when you, when you decide and make the choice on your own to go at Kroger. But anyway, they are, they've been really good, they've been, they haven't been um mean about it, they've just been very matter-of-fact, and they've approached with good negotiation and good compromise to say, okay, we wanna continue to allow them, you to do this, is there a middle ground here you can help us out with? So it's been, it's been a good discussion and and so uh now they had a fire, they're closed for maybe up to three weeks, maybe a month.
They're open.
Oh, they're, they're open again.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Great, so they're allowing us to continue uh through that process, and they had trailers out there and everything and all their frozen products. So that they can, um they were still gonna let us use it while they were closed, so they've been great. I don't wanna be negative to them, they've been really great, let's let's meet them halfway, that's what I'm asking. Um Beechwood Swim Club, um they they put up something on social media and we got texts of, hey, what what's going on here? Um so day-to-day parking there, they're not gonna allow anymore, um they have to maintain that property, they do the gravel, the cut grass cutting. And so the day-to-day, which really wasn't a need of ours in regards to people parking on day-to-day, they were gonna remove all, but we reached out to them, said, hey, day-to-day's fine, it's not really a need for us. Could you allow us to do homecoming and Fan Fest and the bigger events that that bleed over, and they said yes. Um so we're fine with the ones where we request that space, they are totally fine with that.
So kids are not allowed to park there anymore then?
Not day-to-day, and so if you look up there prior to this, it was, what would you say, how how often did a kid park at Swim Club? If, yeah, maybe, maybe five cars.
Yeah, that's what I said, during construction.
Yeah, during construction.
During construction there was, but now that we've opened up eighty-four spots.
So we have, yeah, plenty of.
I don't know if anybody's parked there this school year, I know when we were under construction, we were limited on our student parking.
Well, they're construction workers.
Yeah, they're all construction workers.
So uh they 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 were, they were good, they said, they were, they were, they did a good job, worked with helping us out, especially with Fan Fest being on set, uh this past Saturday. Speaking of that, festival of bands, I I know in talking with Austin, uh band director and uh Colson, the president, uh I think they wanna have one of their highest grossing Fan Fest's, festival of bands that they've ever had. Weather was great, they had some really big bands there, I think Campbell was there, and Ryle was there, so these really large bands generated a lot of money for their program and those boosters, they do it right, I I mean, they're so organized. I came, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna say with that new speaker system, I can hear it on pleasure, right?
The new speaker system is very, it works.
It does.
It's engaging the community.
I'll do our morning announcements from there.
You can actually hear, you can actually hear what they're saying, not like, you know.
It's part of our.
It's not totally around the city.
No, right, exactly, it's not, you're right.
It's part of our communication plan.
It will be amazing.
We'll be touched out. All around the community.
All around.
But yeah, uh I came in.
We did ask for clear.
We did, we got it.
Stay at festival of the bands, they did all that, and then the next morning, I come up here on Sunday, almost six-thirty or seven AM, and it's clean. Like not, it's like nothing happened, and there was thousands and thousands of people, so them plus Jay Hubbard, special shout-out to Jay Hubbard. Just great, just great people.
He does a great job.
Um district newsletter came out this past week, so uh recommend anybody who wants to check out what's going on, full district, that that came out this week. And then afterward tonight, if you guys wanna do a quick walk around the campus just to see where the project will be starting in the next little bit.
Looking out, do we got any drawings?
Yeah, we're waiting on the Joe to advertise the bids, and Codel to review those bids and.
The, the updated drawing?
So waiting on Joe for that, there's a lot of uh details in regards to camera systems that will be over there, uh the drainage system tying in to where, like all that work is, that's, I think the engineering part has been the whole.
Right.
Um they did some borings, the borings are gonna require a little bit more reinforcement in some areas. So just discovering all that through the surveys and the engineers, so that's kind of been the holdup on that.
So we should hear something next month?
Uh I hope we hear something next week or so.
Right.
But in regards to something actionable at board, like that October board, uh board meeting, hopefully we have um the the bids to group, yeah. That would be it.
Okay, thank you. Um okay, um we will take a motion to make the agenda part of the official board minutes. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh Mrs. Berger.
Yes.
Mr. Burns, Mr. Hood.
Yes.
Mrs. Slate, Mrs. Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we will take a motion to adjourn.
I don't give.